Visitors here, I thought we'd go through, everybody introduce themselves, starting with Councilmember Holman.
Jay Holman, Councilmember Ward Three.
Derek Moorhead, Councilman Ward Two.
Charlene Hubach, Councilmember Ward Four.
Matt Hawker, Vice President of the Raymore Chamber.
Kevin Kellogg, Ward One, Councilmember.
I'm Sonya Abdulgavad and I'm the Councilmember for Ward Four.
I'm Cindy Jobe, so it's Community Bank of Raymore.
Jeffrey Stevens, Councilmember Ward One.
Jason Boehner, Councilmember Ward Three.
Sherry Turney with the Raymore Chamber of Commerce.
I'm Ryan Westcoat, for the next 29 days, I am a Ward Two City Councilman and the Mayor pro temp.
Kerry Monses, Raymore Chamber Board.
Pete Kirkoff, the Mayor.
Jim Fearborn, City Manager.
Meredith Howe, Assistant City Manager.
Tom Circo, the President of the Raymore Chamber.
All right, thank you, everybody. And the first item of the meeting tonight is the joint meeting with the Raymore Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, sir. Each year, the Chamber of Commerce and the City Council get together just to discuss how things are going, what each group has been doing relative to the other groups, share any ideas you might have. At the end of you all's discussion, staff does have one suggestion as far as a possible, if the council would be amenable, amendment to the contract that we have with the Chamber, pretty minor, but we'd like to discuss that at the end of you all's discussion. That concludes staff reports, sir.
Thank you. We'll open the floor for discussion. It's gonna be real, oh, go ahead, please.
I'll fight to be the first to speak. You know, one of the things I've been thinking about since I got our PAC at last was on our workshop, on item number two, unrelated to the Chamber, is a discussion of the Civic Center. And I know one of the key longstanding discussions we've had is the use of this kind of facility to have events, especially possibly seminars, conventions, or just other activities, but that would touch and concern the business community. And so, I wanted to reach out to the Chamber, and not that I asked anybody, you guys weren't prepared for this, but maybe in a later discussion, or we'd encourage input in the future for ways that the Chamber of Commerce or members of the business community would have access to this kind of a civic center, be able to use the facility, benefits to the business community. Because we've talked about community input, you know, especially because we have everything from athletics to children, things like that, but I think the business community has not really been heard on this. So, I just encourage in the future, or tonight, either way, just having some additional input. We, I think that would help us in our decision making as well.
As a business owner and to sit in the community for a long time and President Chamber, I think as a growing city, you do need a facility. Of course, not a rec center, you can't compete, but we do need a facility for large and small events, or multiple events, as an activity building, especially if you're gonna bring in larger businesses in the future, and if you bring in businesses such as hotels, management, they do look, if they don't build within their own facility, some type of an area to meet, they do look to have something, a building of such structure and size, to be able to meet and have meetings, and as you grow with hotels and different expansions in our city, they would, they will come, I think that will help entice them, knowing that there's a place they can have different groups and meetings, you know, just like any organization like farmers, state farm American family, I mean, if they're in an area, they do have meeting sites, and they're always looking for a meeting sites. And I know from hearing from a number of people over the years in Raymore, not only, you know, business people and customers, they always ask that same question, do we have a place we can meet, have weddings, graduations, a place we could rent that's of a good size? So, some people like to invite large number of family or membership people coming in, and sometimes we really don't have a place. So, I think that's a good idea for the near future, to look at having something here. I know you guys were working on some ideas from the City Council, from the Mayor, and you guys are working on something for the future, but I think as a business owner, speaking for myself, and since we represent business, and speaking for a number of businesses that I've been involved with over the years, owners, I think that is a good positive way to go, to look at having an activity center, something on a building that you can have a large group, or even multiple groups at one time. So, I think it'd be a great thing to have, and probably look into investing in if we could for the, and I think it'll help the future grow, especially when it comes to hotels, things like that, I think that'd help a lot.
I just want to add to that. I get a lot of phone calls on a regular basis, and people are looking for places to have family reunions, baby showers, wedding showers, wedding receptions, but I also get calls from businesses that have been looking for a place that, some of them that were moving into the area and were wanting to even just interview possible candidates for positions with their business. I probably get more calls about a place to hold some kind of meeting event or whatever than I do anything else. So, I think it is very valuable.
Other comments?
I have one on a completely unrelated topic, but would be kind of curious to hear from the Chamber. It's something I noticed the other day, and would affect, it would seem to affect, in a minor way, both the businesses in town and the residential areas. On trafficways where we have acceleration and deceleration lanes, at times I see cars using those acceleration, deceleration lanes as temporary parking, and I wondered if it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a benefit to them, as well as us as a city, to maybe place some signage in there, just the simple no parking, stopping, or standing. I know the one at Culvers, the other day I saw a car stop there, and again, it's probably not a major public safety concern, but it certainly is an inconvenience for the customers, you know, wanting to pull in, having to go in, get behind the car that stopped, and then go back out around. We have Excel and DCEL lanes out of my subdivision, certainly the ones there at Price Chopper, and we've got a few spots. This might be something that we look at.
Councilmember Stevens?
That'd be a question for Mr. Fearborn. If we would ever get a building up here near North Cass, do we have the utilities up there to deal with it, like water sewer and whatnot?
Some of the area, we have the water main down to the area, Gene, electrical is there as well, gas is there as well, yeah, it's shovel ready. Yeah. And we control that particular section of the water main, on both sides.
I'll try and end with another question. Back to the Chamber, I wanted to ask, because you guys obviously field calls every year, what are some of the kinds of calls that you get related to city services, or things that the city can help with? Like, new businesses coming in, I know they may ask for what kind of services the city can offer. Are we offering the right services for new businesses to be attractive to come in? What are some of the things that you stumble with?
We do get calls, when I get a call, because we'll get calls, people are looking, they want to know what kind of space we have available, you know, for lease or rent around here. They're looking to possibly relocate a business, all of those things. I get their contact information. I keep both Gene Thompson's and Dana Seider's business cards on my desk, so at the time, if they come in, I hand them business card, get their information, and I will contact Gene or Dana or both of them by email or phone, and say, I had this individual in here, you know, looking for a place to relocate, and I pass it on to them, because they're the experts. I do get calls, I get some, mainly from businesses, I get complaints about signage. Especially down towards this end of town, towards the east end, they complain a lot. I've had members that would not renew their membership with the Chamber, because they weren't allowed to have signage for their business out there around Evans and 58. I hear those kind of complaints. We get a lot of calls from people that, I mean, as far as city, they'll call, and they're checking on a business, want to know if the business is licensed here, all of those things, of course, the City Clerk's Office is the place for those, so I refer them to there. We get calls about Parks and Recreation and their programs, we get calls about the farmer's market, we get a lot of calls. If I can answer the question like, the farmer's market's on Tuesday from four to seven PM, I answer that instead of, you know, making them place another phone call. If it's something I know that they need to contact someone else, I will direct the call to the appropriate department here at City Hall. Did that answer your question somewhat?
Oh, it did, and I appreciate the answer. Kind of a follow-up, though, I mean, with the existing businesses that are current members, are there any, I guess, without picking on a particular business, are there any commonalities of complaints or gripes that you're hearing? I mean, are we helping the business community, or like, I think the best example was the signs on the east side of town? Or are we doing anything that are inhibiting our business community, from what you're hearing?
From what I hear, and most of it's gonna be from our members that are like joining or coming into the city, I hear really positive things. I really do, I hear positive things about the staff over here. I just had a guy that, back when NTB opened, which was 2008 maybe? Was it about 2008 when they, when NTB came into town? Six, well, it was longer, but at the time that they came into town, we, our office was in the Historica Society's house, and NTB was going in right next door, and they came over. Well, the manager at the time, he had left NTB, but just recently came back, like in the last two to three months. About six weeks ago, he walked in my office, and one of the first things, I mean, this is years later, that he was talking about was that they had never, ever received the kind of welcome in any of their other locations as they received here, from their groundbreaking to their ribbon cutting, I mean, they, he praised that, and we're talking years later. And I hear that a lot, that the groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings that are done here in this community are unlike any of them that they experienced most places. And they appreciate that, because they feel like there's appreciation for their investment in our community and our city. So, I don't really hear a lot of complaints about the city or the staff. Really, the signage has been about the biggest one that I've heard. And whenever, whenever I receive anything, and I've received emails from people complaining that there's black mold in a rental property, I always direct those kind of complaints over here, and the city is real good about taking it and responding back to me, and even telling me what they've done when they don't even know that to me. So, I have to say, we have a great working relationship with the city staff, and they've been very supportive.
Well, then you never hear about our fees being too high, or anything like that, in any of the things that we require? But I know in some cases, that our, some of our fees are higher than the surrounding area, so I was wondering if that had any impact at all on businesses choosing to come to Raymore.
I know that there have been complaints about that, but not a lot of people have come to me and gone into great detail, or discussed it at any length of what specific fees, or which particular ones, I think. But I do know that sometimes that has come up as a topic, but they have never gotten into really any deep discussion with me about that.
I did have a question about signs. We brought this up probably in '09 or '10, when we had a meetings here, and I, we were gonna look into it, and I've been here a long time, since actually '01, since my agency's been here. And years back, '07, '08, they had some signage rule changes and different things they'd done, and I had a problem with some stuff. As an insurance agency at the time, and I still have some, I had signs created, and my insurers would want to put them in the yard so far back, and say, this home insured by Farmers Insurance, Tom Circo, because they wanted to advertise for me, which was their choice. They were being taken down because of some signage rules that they were gonna look into, and I was curious how those are still working, because I see a lot of real estate signs go in all the time, they can be up six months, a year, year and a half, trying to sell a home, and there was, there's no problem about putting up any kind of a real estate sign from any real company, and some of the real estate companies aren't even local, and sometimes not their agents, some of their agents who sell here aren't local. Yet I live here, pay taxes here, my business is here, eighty-five percent of what I shop, ninety percent a month, I do here in Raymore. Yet we always, I had problems putting up signs, and we discussed that before, and I was wondering if those sign rules have changed some, because I still see all these signs up for real estate companies, and people making money with no problem, I have them signed up at any time they want to, to put them up, take them down for sale. But if I had signs up with my insurance company, with my name in the yard, they were taken down years back, and told that they were not allowed to be put up, and I'm curious how that signage rules, if they've changed much in the last few years on that.
The sign rules have not changed in the last few years. There would be two different sections of code enforcement that would apply. One would be for a resident trying to sell their own personal property, and they're, and those rules are more liberal, certainly than a sign, the signage rules that apply to business advertisement. I could look into it and find out how far back, but I would imagine that any kind of business advertisement would be limited in the amount of time that it could go up, because the same rule would have to apply as far as free trade is concerned, with putting a yard sign up, advertising, say, your business, and a yard sign that's going up, advertising seamless guttering, or a window company, or that they're just literally going through town, or a roofing company after a storm, where they're just going through town, putting up their yard signs, and there's a, there's a limited amount of time that those are allowed to remain up by now.
Okay, yeah, that was my question before, but real estate companies, they can come in with any real estate company, put a sign up, because they're wanting to sell a house, even though this house is for sale, and this company, real estate company has a contract. So, they're selling the house, and they can come in, they don't even have to be local here, the agent don't even have to be local here, but those can go up for years at a time, because the house is still for sale, but they're doing, and that advertises for those people, that advertised to the real estate companies for a long time, Reese Nichols, whoever, because their signs are there, and they're trying to sell a house. But, like I said online, I understand what you're saying, like, guy comes in for roofing, guy comes in for guttering from outside, and they do some jobs, and they leave signs up for advertising. I was more curious, local residents, local business people who have signage up, that live here, pay taxes here, well, if my people were advertising something ten feet off back in their yard, for me, I didn't know if they could, we could look into that, because I'm not some guy coming from out of town, and some other businesses I talk to are local here and live here, but we're not from out of town trying to, or we were established here and pay taxes, we, businesses are here, we're residents here, and that's kind of the thing, so I didn't know.
I was on planning and zoning during the last major design change. We did a pretty extensive amendment in 2012, but we didn't deal with commercial signs. We were dealing primarily with political signs, because of the election cycle. You know, one encouragement I would give is that Planning and Zoning Commission regularly looks for adjustments or amendments to the Uniform Development Code, and they kind of pick and choose sections, and they're always looking for people to make recommendations. I haven't seen, I was not a party to any of the commercial sign stuff, I think that's been pretty static, but that would be something I would encourage, that, you know, contact Community Development, they add that kind of to the list to take a look at.
And that would certainly be the route, sir, that he'd want to take. I would venture that there is, that a real estate sign that is up, while it advertises the business to some degree, it's advertising a home for sale. And the Planning and Zoning Commission would probably be somewhat hesitant to put up any sort of a restriction that keeps a homeowner from trying to sell their own home, and the homeowner probably would not look at a real estate sign as being an advertising sign for a business, rather for a sale sign for their home.
Yeah, I didn't want them to pull, I wasn't planning on doing that, pulling signs. I was just curious, this is a thing we do, and this is what it is, if businesses are local, want to do something, customers want to advertise, that was all my, my concern, could we have a, you know, I said, go to planning and zoning, ask a question, can we have those, because they're just not outside sources, I would never expect you to pull a mortgage sign, or selling homes, or whatever, or long-term for rent, or whatever, and that's good, that's business people doing business. But I said, that's just a problem I had years ago, and people create signs, and they were taking down, and I'm wondering, well, I'm here, and I'm paying, why couldn't I advertise? I didn't know how many foot back from the street, ten feet, to have a sign in your yard, you know, but that's why I said that question. I would never expect you not to honor those things, of course, those are businesses, but just curious about local businesses who have an opportunity.
I wanted to shift gears, go back to the Civic Center, real quick. I know that I do, once a year, I have to rent a facility outside of Belton, Raymore, to do a seminar with some of my commercial account holders, because we simply don't have the facilities available to be able to make that work. Last year, I looked at, in Belton, for one, because we usually do this for around seventy-five clients. It would be much easier, since most of the customers that I do this seminar with are North Cass customers, some are South Jackson County and Lee Summit area, but the majority of them are here. So, having a facility that I could rent right next to my office, run down the street, get things set up, make it much easier for me as a business owner to be able to have that kind of situation. So, I didn't mean to change too much of that topic, but I personally, as a business owner in the community, would like to be able to have something that I could have a little better control over.
Here, Kevin, Sonya, and then Jeffrey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt, I had to ask you, following up on that, direct question, what size of facility do you typically need for your purposes? And I'm very aware of Matt's business, he is a local insurance agent here in Raymore, Belton area, as a matter of fact, he's my agent. So, I, what, what size of a facility, what types of amenities are you looking for, and such like that? Because part of what we're gonna be discussing tonight, in workshop number two, the Civic Center on our agenda, is different sizes of rooms and stuff like that, so I'd be curious, because that will go directly into tonight's discussion, as soon as we get done here, if you can explain.
I usually have, and it varies from year to year, depending upon the amount of the owners and what staff that they bring to the meeting, because it's like a business continuation class and seminar that I do, and a room probably about the size of this is about what I have rented in the past. Projection screens, having the ability to have the audio equipment available, that's usually the kind of, the, kind of like what we have set up here, we don't need microphones, we don't need this type of setup, but at least having the equipment to be able to show a presentation, and the audio information. A podium is nice, it's not necessary, I get to move around a lot anyways, and they usually sit too stagnant. But then I have guest speakers who come in, and sometimes they are, they want to get centered behind something and run. So, having the ability to have refreshments within the building. One of the things that, one of the places that I go to, I pay a fee, and they provide the food, the beverage. Now, of course, it's not a municipality who I use, go through, but that is something that I don't have to worry about, I simply just have to pay the fee, and I'm done with it, I show up, get set up, plug in, and I'm ready to present. And that makes it a lot better than having to have an open, empty room, that I'm having to set up chairs, move everything around. If I want something, not the wrong Price Chopper Hy-Vee, but going and getting it, bringing it in, taking it down, all of that stuff adds hours to the amount of work, when I really need to be focused on the presentation to my customers.
Thank you. My question was actually the same, but I'd like to hear from you, you said you get a lot of calls also. Do you get an idea of what size space people are looking for, how many people they're inviting to the things that they're asking you for space?
We get calls for, I mean, people that are wanting to have like a small meeting, fifteen to twenty people, we've had calls about wedding receptions, a place that will hold a hundred and fifty to two hundred people. I'm telling you, if Creekmore would have built a bigger clubhouse, they would have had all sorts of business in the last few years, because we get several of those calls every single year. And there's just not, even for our meetings, we use the Community Bank of Raymore, which is great that they have, you know, allowed us to come in, but there are times, I mean, because our meetings can be sometimes seventy-five, eighty people. Some of the evening meetings, we've had, Foxwood's great, Foxwood's been great to host them too. Parking sometimes is an issue there for people, but we get from, I mean, inquiries all the time, I mean, from like I said, fifteen to twenty people, to a lot of times people are looking for a place that will hold a hundred and fifty to two hundred people. So, it varies.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I kind of wanted to know, since we've eliminated the excise tax on small businesses, does there have been any noticeable effect in terms of filling up existing spaces?
It has not impacted yet, however, the excise tax is actually eliminated on all businesses, with the exception of those businesses going into incentive areas. So, we haven't noticed one way or the other.
Councilmember Boehner?
I have kind of a multi-pronged approach on this. In looking forward, what have we done since the last time we met to encourage home-based businesses, say, as an incubator, or those kind of services, as far as the Chamber is concerned?
The answer to that would be, we have reduced the business license tax, or the business license fee that home-based businesses have to pay. We also eliminated it for certain categories of business that would be considered home-based. For instance, if it's more of an avocation that does involve some sale, it's eliminated for those types of businesses.
If I might add, with Community Bank of Raymore, and what we're talking about as far as space, is that when we designed our building, we probably should have designed it a little bit differently, because we could utilize our space. What we have upstairs, as many people have mentioned here, is that we have an inside entrance, and if we had an outside entrance, that space would be used probably every night. We use it for the school district, for many of their banquet's, many of, a lot of their banquet's. We have people calling outside the community, asking for it, whether it be Girl Scouts, whether it be for, even for wedding rehearsals, or wedding receptions, they see it lit up upstairs, or wondering what the use is for. We have calls for it all the time, even on the Belton side, because there are some spaces in Belton that they don't have, you know, they don't have useful space for either, but we have that room all the time that's being asked for. So, but we man it through our employees, because of the, obviously for the security risk and everything else, but, and we don't charge either, but that's the other fee. But like you were saying, you want somebody to set it up, but you do bring your outside vendors in to either the Hy-Vee's, the Affordable Elegance, or whatever, and we have our kitchen, but I just want to add that, that hasn't been said here, but there is a huge use, I believe, that we could utilize the Civic Center for.
Go ahead.
I'd like to bounce back to Councilmember Boehner's question about home businesses. Does the Chamber have any type of focus for membership, promoting them, or trying to bring those people into the Chamber's members?
We've had a few that have come and joined as members, I don't know that we've specifically targeted them, and I don't know if that's because our lists in the past for licensed businesses haven't included maybe all of the home-based businesses, but we do have a few, but we haven't specifically targeted that group. I mean, we do have a rate for home-based businesses, but it's, and it's lower.
Part of the purpose in my, in my question there is, is one to kind of understand what we're doing jointly together as a council and as a chamber, to encourage entrepreneurship within the city, so that we grow, we grow economically together, we spend here together, we make that synergistic endeavor together, and I'm just trying to- And I'm just trying to kind of get a handle on, you know, what each piece is doing. Have we done anything, uh, to kind of push that issue forward?
Other comments, questions, suggestions?
Um, what we could possibly do is try to find out if there are any home-based businesses in the area that we want to have a discussion. When we don't have the experience of knowing and having the discussion points of trying to find out what's advantageous to them compared to what an insurance agency or a bank or utility company as far as being a member is concerned, um, if we, anyone in the council or anyone in our chamber, we can possibly bring this up at our retreat meeting we're having in a few weeks to try to figure out how to focus and have that discussion point. But that's a good point for us to be able to bring up, as, because we're always looking for members. We always want to continue to grow our membership and make it larger. Uh, it works for everybody, the networking is good, uh, but I don't know that we have specifically targeted the home-based business fronts. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Jean.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one of the things that we've, we've done over the years is our cooperative agreement with the University of Centralman's or on providing counseling to small businesses, startup businesses. The worst thing you can do is, is let a business get started that's undercapitalized or you set them up for failure by, by not having them understand the, what it's going to take to, to get that business off the ground and started. The other area that we've tried to look at is, is creating some venture capital, some angel funds, maybe to, uh, to have some seed money for some of the companies that need money to get started. Uh, that's a challenge in itself to, to put together, but that's, we've looked at, at opportunities in that direction. Those are a couple of things we do. Obviously, we like to sit down with them and, and go over any of the, the codes and stuff that they need to be before they get too far down the line in their business so that they understand that they're not in, you know, get started and then find out they're in violation of something.
Thank you. Other comments? I'll see none, we'll close off this section. Thank you for coming out. Oh, oh, that's right, you told me in the beginning that you had one.
Thank you, sir. Um, what's being passed around is the current, the city council's, uh, current contract with the chamber board. Uh, it was, uh, agreed to in November of 2013, as you can see at the top. Uh, the, the chamber board has had some discussions, um, and i- if you all are unaware, uh, Jean and I are, are kind of like utility infielders with the chamber board, who are, we serve as employees of the city council and at the same time we're on the chamber board, uh, by virtue of, of our positions. The, uh, the chamber board has had some discussion relative to item three B and C on this contract. Um, pretty simple change, uh, that, that staff would actually support is moving away from the quarterly payments because A specifically calls out the fact that we'll make a payment of six thousand dollars in support of the chamber by the city, but then we spell out that we're going to do it in quarterly payments. We're, we're taking something that we agree is going to be a total payment that's made with no conditions on why we wouldn't, and then we double the amount of cost in making the pay, or triple the amount of cost in making the payment by doing it over quarters rather than one time per year. Uh, staff would propose that if, if the council is agreeable, that we bring a change to the contract calling for, uh, the city agrees to compensate the chamber for six thousand per fiscal year payable April first of each year. And we seek council consensus to bring that forward to you all as an ordinance.
I'm seeing nods in the affirmative.
And, and that's the only change? There's no change in any representation or the two seats on the board?
Not at all. This would be the only change to the contract that we would be proposing.
And I can see, continue to see affirmative nod, so I, I think we get the, support of the council. All right, well, thank you again for coming out this evening, appreciate it. Oh, please, go ahead.
Just real quick, I, I personally would like to have any comments or feedback anyone has on what they think maybe's gone well, what you would like more out of us, or vice versa. I, I would just like to have any feedback if anyone has any suggestions or comments.
Okay. I appreciate all the email communication. Uh, I wish I could attend more ribbon cuttings and things like that, but it's nice to at least be able to get that and I, uh, some groups I don't, you know, because I belong to multiple chambers, I don't always get that. But here, at least I always know what's going on and I try to attend as much as I can, so please keep that up.
Yeah. Sonia.
I'll, I'll chime in, just a lot of what we talked about last year too, that communication between the council and this, or the chamber and the city and the council is excellent. We have a great relationship and keep up the good work.
Well, I just, if there's something that, you know, anyone has a suggestion on something they'd like to see more of or less of, or, I, I was just open for that too. And yes, thank you for bringing that up. That's a good target for 2015.
Well, everybody has Sherry's email, so if you need to contact her. Thank you again.
Mr. Mayor, I had one that you didn't recognize.
Oh, I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry.
Uh, I wanted to share with all of you a concern that I have. Every once in a while, I go through town and I pretend that I'm a stranger and that I'm looking at Raymore to see if it is a place that I would like to, um, bring my business to. And the thing, there's two things that really bothers me. One has to do with the entrance and the parking lots of the businesses versus the, uh, street. Lots of times when, and there go, there seems to be a disconnect between them. There will be places where you can hardly go into the business because it, the entrance is so bad. And sometimes it is the, uh, city's fault because we haven't fixed the street and sometimes it's the business's fault. But either way, it looks bad and for those of us that are driving through the town and we see, you want to turn in, I guess one of the, one that I noticed the most was when Mazuma Credit Union had that big trouble and you couldn't get from the street to the parking area in there. And I don't know whose responsibility it is, I don't know whether the, the, um, chamber, whether you monitor the entrances of your, uh, people or, or whether it's up to the city or what. But we need to do something so that it doesn't look so bad when you go through town. It looks like here, like a disaster zone sometimes. Here is the business and here's the city and never the twain shall meet. And I just think that we ought to take a look at it and see what it is. And if it's the city's responsibility with, through public works, then we need to do it. But I just wanted you to know that I'm unhappy with what I see when I'm going to the different businesses and, uh, the city. There has to be some way we can get together on that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and, and just as a reminder to all the council members, uh, Jim Catterett's office is looking at the chain, possible changes to the code. We had brought this item to you all three months ago, I think, in a work session item, and, and he's looking at, uh, and has discovered up some pretty significant changes that we don't think would be too much of a hardship on some of the businesses to make those kind of changes to their parking lots. For the most part, it is a code enforcement item. Um, it is, a- as we said three months ago, it is very counterintuitive to staff that someone would let their parking lot go to such a degree that it wasn't inviting for people to come in and visit their business. But we do have a couple of businesses in town that we have persistent problems with, and the changes to the code would target the repeat offenders while not being so onerous on people who are doing the job all the time. Uh, I noticed, uh, the Price Chopper parking lot was completely redone just a few weeks ago and they've been here a significantly shorter term than some of the businesses that you all probably know I'm talking about. Um, the, uh, the, so we intend to be bringing proposed changes before the council in another work session here in the next couple of months, once Jim gets all of that trimmed up.
Any final comments? Jeffrey.
Mr. Ubach, you can go up to Wendy's and look at their parking lot. I don't think they've, uh, done a really good job of getting their act, uh, in, um, they've been down the insides. At least we have some people that are doing.
Since you brought that up, I was always curious as I get in Willwind. You know, I'm there for, since oh one, I get so many people coming through, their customers and other people saying, when it was so bad. I'll be, most people don't understand who is responsible. When you hit to the street and you get in these parking areas, is there a footage that the city has a responsibility to, or is it the owner going right to the city? You know, we, I get that a lot from different business owners there and other places. Hey, Tom, who, who fixed it? Who's supposed to do that? You know, I tell them, you know, I'm not sure. And we got to go to the city. They might have some restrictions of five feet, four feet that they have leeway to and if they do, that they should repair those. I see somebody's repaired the Willwind recently and patched up some of those bad holes, but I'm not sure really, when you ask, I ask for these, or try to answer these business owners, I'm not even sure myself. I tell them all these years here, who does have actual priority, the city or the owners of the property? Can you clear that up? I'm, I'm not sure.
The, the city's responsib- basically, when you look at a street, you know it's a street, it's ours. When you know you're in the parking lot, it's the developers or it's the business owners. And, I mean, it's a real clear line of demarcation. We don't go, we don't go into the apron at all in that standpoint. That they are responsible for the, through the, same way it would be with your driveway. When, when you're on the street, you're on the street. Now, we are responsible for making sure that they meet minimum standards and that's what we're kind of looking at, what those minimum standards are going to be going into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important that I bring up and point out and actually accept our own responsibility for, you know, the, the ability of a parking lot to deteriorate. I mean, we, we approve developments and, and we allow for asphalt parking surfaces and there's a reason for that. It's, it's cheaper and it, it's advantageous for the developer, for the business and such. And, you know, and we, even as the city, had a asphalt parking lot surface here that we had to tear out within the last three years, I believe it was, and actually put in cement because of the, the, the traffic that we were using, that we were generating here at City Hall was deteriorating our, our, our parking surfaces just because of the, the braking motion. When you come to a stop, you pre- pressure on a certain spot of a parking spot and that's what happened out here in front. Now, with that said, is that we allow, you know, as city council, through our zoning and, and our, our building codes, for those surfaces, you know? And we do that to help the businesses. Now, if, if we make it so regulated and so heavy-handed to where we require eight, twelve inches of, of concrete out there, we, you know, those regulations will just drive those businesses out because they cannot afford that, that type of, of, uh, requirement and in regulation. So, uh, like it's been said here earlier, you know, if the businesses are, are drawing in the customers and they, they need to have those kind of, you know, good surfaces out there, Price Choppers is a perfect example, Walmart's another perfect example. Those, those businesses need to have those surfaces maintained and regularly and all of that, and they do, you know? So, I, I mean, yeah, I, I'll take responsibility that I allow that, that surface out there, but there's a reason for that and it, it's because of, if we did require concrete, they probably wouldn't be there.
Any parting comments? Okay, thank you again. Council will move on with the second part, the workshop number two, Civic Center.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, while Mr. Newman kind of tees off this, this second workshop, I'm going to be getting one of his colleagues on to the speakerphone here to join our conversation.
Two, three, one, it's been a great live. So, say hi to everybody.
Hello, everybody.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. I want to make a quick introduction. Uh, besides Dave Hamel, Dave is, uh, you met Steve Blackburn at our last workshop. Uh, Dave is Steve's associate, uh, so he's here joining us tonight. Um, and then I have Kwame Smith with me. Um, at the last meeting, I mentioned Kwame couldn't make it, his wife was having a baby right at the exact time that we had our meeting, so, uh, so, so he is here tonight. And then we have Blake Naumann as well, uh, with our office. It's been working with us on the concept. So we've been excited to come tonight to, um, show you what we've generated based on your feedback. Uh, at the last meeting, we really enjoyed the, the last programming session, hope you did too. Jim told us that we need to try to keep this to an hour because you were pretty tired out after our last work session, so we're trying to keep it a little bit shorter tonight. Um, so tonight... There we go. So tonight our, our agenda is, uh, we have a quick, um, item on a mission statement and at the last meeting, you gave us some feedback on what you thought was important, um, in Raymore. And so we've taken those, um, ideas and those thoughts that you have and we've drafted a, a very, a draft mission statement for you to review. Um, this is probably something that you might want to think about, so what we'll do is send that mission statement to Jim so that, uh, you can, he can send that along to you and you can give us some feedback later on that, uh, mission statement. And then, um, after that, we'll talk about, Dave will give a brief summary of the program based on our last workshop that we had with you, and it's got a little bit more detail, um, but it's the, the spaces that you selected in that, uh, card game from last time. And then we have three, uh, concepts that we want to review with you tonight as well. And then the last thing we want to do is get some feedback from you on what you think the facility should look like, um, some of the, uh, visual characteristics. And so we have a, um, a dot polling exercise that we'll do with you and that's these three boards here. So we'll, we'll talk more about all of these as we get into them. So as far as the, the mission statement, what we asked is, what is the greatest value a Civic Center can bring to the residents of Raymore? And, um, we heard things like gathering place, uh, multipurpose space, meeting rooms, uh, flexibility, bringing people together, um, a variety of activities, affordable for the community, uh, and sense of community are some of the things that we heard from you. So we took those words and crafted a mission statement, um, and I'll just read it. "The Raymore Civic Center will create a place to gather and will promote a sense of community through an affordable and flexible environment that accommodates a variety of activities and programs for all ages." Um, so if you have any immediate feedback on that or thoughts, um, please feel free to speak up now. Otherwise, um, like I said, we can provide this to Jim and he can, um, distribute that to everybody so that you can, um, think about it a little bit further and give us some feedback. Okay?
I was kind of thinking about this a little bit. I'm not sure if we can afford what we all wanted, but I wonder if we could do this in two separate phases, maybe even separate buildings? Seems like the overall need is meeting space. Is that something we can do?
It's a possibility. We should talk about that once we get into the concepts and, um, I think, uh, that is a possibility to try to phase that, um, if that's the, what the council... It's a possibility. We should talk about that once we get into the concepts, and, um, I think, uh, that is a possibility to try to phase that, um, if that's the, what the council would like to do. We have, um, when we get into the concepts, we'll, what we did is, um, we've shown the, the kind of the basic. We had a, if you remember, we had a yes pile and a maybe pile. And so we've shown the yes, uh, pile spaces as, um, the concept, and then we've shown how some of those maybe spaces could be added on, uh, later, um, or phased or, uh, later on in the, in the, um, in the life of the building. So that is something phasing is definitely something that we can look at. Um, so before we get into the concepts, let me, uh, turn it over to Dave. Well, let me turn it over to Dave and he can, um, and I think Kwame's gonna pass out, uh, the detailed program, and like I said, this, this program is based on the card game that we, um, that we played at the last workshop. So I'll let, uh, Dave kinda give a quick summary of, of the program.
Thanks, Kerry. Can you guys hear me all?
Yes.
Right, so, um, as you know, the, the card game, uh, we came up with sort of a, a basic program that, uh, we've ever, uh, over, uh, desired, uh, used in the building. And the, the first one on the list, as you see, is really the administration spaces, which is sort of a required part of the program. And certainly, you know, as we go down the road further, we can edit this and, and customize it to exactly what you need. But as a starting point, we have about, uh, eighteen hundred and fifty square feet for administrative spaces that, uh, cover offices, those workrooms, computer, uh, server room and a, and a break room. So those are all very typical things that we, we include. Uh, after that is, is again, another required part of the program, which is support spaces, which includes everything from, uh, lobby spaces to lounge, the control desk, uh, all the locker rooms, men's and women's public toilets, and then all of the, the back of house things such as electrical rooms, mechanical rooms, uh, dystopian spaces, uh, those kinds of things. Again, this is a placeholder, and, and if some of these are more than we need, we can, uh, extract them, and if there's things that, that aren't adequate, we can expand them. But as a sort of a, a baseline, uh, I think this is a, is a good starting point. Then we get into the, the rest of the program spaces. We've got a twenty-five person classroom that's about seven hundred square foot, square feet, including the storage. We've got a dry craft that might also serve as, uh, an elevated stage for the community room or event hall. The event hall is, is set up to handle about three hundred, uh, people, uh, in a banquet or conference kind of, uh, seating arrangement. It can be divided into three separate rooms with movable partition walls that are acoustically treated. Uh, right off of that would also include a, a catering kitchen so that when you have a big banquet there, uh, cater could come in and serve food from that kitchen. It's not intending to, to be a full commercial prep kitchen. It's intended really to be used by a catering company to, to serve, um, meals or snacks at the, at the community room. Then we've got a, a high school-sized, uh, gymnasium that, uh, will handle a, a, a full-size high school basketball court down the middle. And then you can also, uh, play cross-court basketball or volleyball in the cross-court's direction in a sort of a junior-size, uh, game line situation. And then around the, the perimeter of the gym, we have an elevated jog-walk track, uh, that would be potentially twelve laps per mile. If we contained it just inside the gym, it would probably be closer to sixteen laps per mile, depending on how we make it, uh, set up in the plan. And then the very last item we had was a sustainable options, which was really an allowance to, to allow us to, to do some fairly creative things to make the building more sustainable and energy efficient. So that's the basic program. Uh, we've also included some costs here that, that, uh, go along with it, that comes to about ten million dollars for the base, uh, building itself. But by the time you add in soft costs for, uh, not only soft costs, but the site development costs, and, uh, a contingency that we've got, it's set at about fifteen percent, which is very generous. These are all very generous numbers and very conservative, with the idea being that, that we don't wanna, uh, suggest something here that we can't, uh, provide in the end. And again, these are very rough numbers at this early stage, and we certainly can focus in on them and hone them down and probably reduce this number once we know more about the project, and perhaps if we had a site, we could, uh, try to focus in on, on the real site development costs. So at this point, we're just throwing in some, uh, some numbers that we think are reasonable and achievable. Uh, this includes, uh, inflation, uh, for almost two and a half years. We're assuming that, uh, construction might not start until June of two thousand and sixteen, while we spend the majority of the time in two thousand and fifteen, from maybe the spring of two thousand and fifteen to the end of the year in the design and construction document phase, with construction starting potentially in, in the summer of two thousand and sixteen, or maybe sooner than that. Uh, but those are some of the assumptions that we've made in, in putting this estimate together. Does that cover it pretty well, Kerry?
Yeah, I think so. Are there any questions about the program at this point? Like Dave said, um, a lot of the, especially the soft costs are pretty generous at this point, and, um, you know, we would expect to refine those once we get more feedback from you. But at this point, they're kind of placeholders. So if not, we'll go ahead and move right into the, the concepts, and I want this to be kind of an open discussion, and if we have, uh, if anybody has questions or comments, or, um, Dave can jump in, or Kwame, or, or Blake as well. Um, and these are very conceptual in nature. These are not intended to be, uh, detailed floor plans. We really need to get some feedback from you before, uh, before we get, you know, in more detail. This first concept, um, is a very compact, um, concept. And before I talk about this concept, there's a few kind of, um, ideas that we, uh, that we think are very important, and we be can, we're consistent with those among all these concepts. And one is our control, control space, um, and entry point. So when a visitor comes into the building, it's really important to us to have a control desk, a reception desk. So the first thing they see when they come in is that control desk, and it's also really important that that control desk have visual observation in, throughout the, throughout the building. So we try to keep that very centrally located, and, um, that will make, uh, the, the staff efficient. So we won't have to have a lot of staff to operate the facility, um, and minimize that operation cost. So that's one piece that's very important. We also give a lot of thought to where the spaces are. Um, some of the spaces really lend themselves to, um, to membership-type of spaces so that if you, uh, you have a membership to use the gymnasium or use, uh, some of the exercise areas. And then there's other spaces that more are lend themselves to more of the community spaces that are, um, um, that are more open to the community, that are rentals but are open to the community. And so as we go through this, you'll see how, um, how we've set these up to kind of define those two types of spaces. And, uh, we've established the control desks so that they have good monitoring of those, uh, membership areas as well. And then, um, the other kind of issue that we think about as we're doing these is visibility into the activity areas. We think it's really important that visitors, when they come to the facility, they can see all the different types of activities that are available in the, in the, in the Civic Center. And so that really helps encourage activity and helps encourage, uh, use of the facility when we have that, um, kind of transparency and openness in the facility. Um, so this, you can see the dash spaces. Those are the, those were the not, those were the maybe pile, I'll call them. Those are the things that you thought might be possible. Um, the rest of the spaces are the priority spaces. So, um, on this option A, uh, the front entry is here. You would come into a lobby. There is a small lounge area that's right off the control desk. Um, the control desk is, uh, immediately adjacent to the staff area. So, um, the staff, uh, has really good access back and forth between the control desk and their kind of office administration space. Um, this is more of the, what we call the community wing. Um, that's kind of the free area. Um, if you were to go down this corridor or this corridor, or is more of the membership or kind of, we call it play to, uh, pay-to-play area. Um, so, uh, when you come into the lobby, you'd have your choice of, uh, either going to the community rooms. Um, these are the, the three hundred-person community space that Dave was talking about. It's divisible into three separate spaces, and you can see that each of these spaces, each of these space has, uh, a separate entry so that, you know, if this, um, partition is drawn, uh, you can really have three different meetings going on at the same time. Uh, we also have, uh, good exterior access for the community rooms so that, um, if there is nice outdoor space, that's another really good amenity. If there is a reception here, uh, this outdoor patio space can be used. Uh, it can be a good breakout area if you're having a meeting. So, uh, then we've also shown some areas that would be used for storage and, um, and, uh, storage of the folding partition. So that's what these, these blocks of spaces are here. Then we also have, um, a crafts room that we talked about, um, at the programming session, that would be, um, also a dual-purpose space. This would also be used for a, a raised stage. And so we would have a, a small ramp that would have access, or stairs that have access, that has access to this, this craft room. Um, and then that would serve as a stage that would be directly, directly adjacent to the communities, uh, the community rooms. Um, then we also have the classroom. This is the twenty-five-person classroom, and then the kitchen area. This is the catering kitchen, uh, that would serve the community spaces. Um, we were looking at potential future, um, uh, childcare, child watch area that could be added here, which would be, um, good because it has very good access or visible, uh, visibility from the control desk to that childcare area. And then, um, of course, in the, um, membership area is the gymnasium space. And I, and I forgot to mention, we do have men's and women's rooms down here that would serve the community spaces or serve the rest of the facility. And then we have kind of our support space. This is all the back of house, uh, the lockers, shower areas, mechanical spaces, um, and, uh, storage areas. Then we also have looked at, in this concept, um, some future expansion, um, some, uh, future spin areas. That was one of the, uh, maybe spaces. And then a future fitness area. And, um, above the gymnasium, uh, there would be a, an elevated track, uh, walking track, exercise track. Another option, um, instead of, um, having the future expansion of the fitness area is to actually locate the fitness area on the second level with the track. It really gives, um, a lot more purpose to having a second story, essentially, if we could have the fitness area up there. Um, so you'll see in a later option what that would look like if we actually had the, the fitness, um, space on the upper level, uh, with the, with the, with the elevated track. Kwame, anything to add on that option?
I think you've covered it pretty well, Kerry. The one thing I would add is the, the, um, if you look at the lower corner of the plan, you see hospital wellness, which was another, maybe pile item. Um, on, on, on all the plans, this plan and the, the option that we'll look at further, um, that has the ability to have access outside of the facility as well, making the assumption that it would be operated by a private operator. So it does have access from the facility, but also exterior access that could be utilized specifically for that purpose outside of the facility hours.
Thanks, Kwame. On all these concepts, uh, once we, uh, have a site in mind, it would really, it will help us to really orient the building. These are all kind of generic layouts because we really don't have a site, so, you know, depending on where the parking is and where the street access is, it could affect any of these options. But it gives you a, a good idea of how it might lay out. Um, this is the second option. It's much more linear in nature, um, as opposed to the really centralized option that you saw, uh, the last one. So in this option, we have the entry here directly into a lobby space. Again, the control desk, um, is adjacent to the staff area. This control desk has really good visibility down into the, kind of the membership wing, and has good access or good, uh, visibility down into the, the, uh, community wing area as well. This option, what's a little bit different about it as well is the lobby and lounge space would have kind of visibility out to the exterior area, would have good natural light that could come into that lounge and lobby space. It could be a really, a really pleasant space. But again, very similar to the last one, you'd come in and you'd have a choice whether you, um, go through the membership area to the gymnasium and, uh, some of the, um, uh, lockers and some of the support spaces, or going into the, to the more community room or the community wing. Where the community rooms, we have the three separate, uh, community rooms that could be opened into one single large room, or it could be two, um, two spaces or three spaces. Um, each one of these spaces would have, um, a screen, um, similar to what we're using tonight, um, and, um, audiovisual, uh, support. Again, this has good visibility, um, and good, uh, access to an exterior patio space. Uh, this, this, uh, option also has, uh, a raised craft area that could also be used for a stage for some of those performing arts, um, activities that we talked about. And then the, uh, men's and women's room is very centrally located in, within the facility to serve the community room or the, um, uh, the gymnasium. But actually, the gymnasium, um, would have restrooms associated with the shower. So really, these restrooms are really meant for this, this part of the wing. And then we have a kitchen area that would, uh, serve the community room as well. And then we also have looked at the same kind of expansion capabilities. Um, this one really has nice expansion capabilities. This corridor could extend out, and you really could add additional spaces. Um, they all have expansion capabilities for the gymnasium, if you wanted to add additional gymnasium space in the future as well.
This plan here, just to add on the expansion capabilities a little bit, this plan for the community wing portion, it has the, the distinctability to expand in both directions of that wing. Um, so it, it allows for a, you know, as you expand that program, it allows for more of a compact expansion.
If, if we had to do this in phases, does this concept lend itself more to a, a multi-phase approach, whereas, you know, the right hip, with the right side could be done first and then adding the left side at a later date?
Yeah, definitely. This one would lend itself to that exact phasing idea where this really could be phase one, and this could be added as phase two. Any other comments or questions? And then we can come back to these two after I run through them, if you'd like.
Thank you. The elevated running track, it's almost really ready to be, uh, cha- exchanged out for a double-sized gym, especially if you're gonna use it for a Mac gym that will double as, uh, exposition space.
I'm s- I'm sorry, and...
I say the running track, the elevated running track. I say the running track, the elevated running track, it's quite a bit of money. I think I'd be willing to exchange it for more space in the gym, especially if we're going to use it for exposition space later.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's one reason we, you know, just to have the elevated walking track, we also have an elevator and a stair, and so there is quite a bit of cost with that unless we are to have additional programmed area on the second floor. It really helps justify the cost a little bit more, but if it's just the elevated track, it's kind of hard to justify that cost, I think. And then the third concept also kind of breaks this into two separate wings. Front entry is here, you would come into a lobby space and a control desk that's adjacent to the staff area. This is the pay-to-play wing, the membership area with the gymnasium, and then a lounge area. Again, there is visibility through the building, so you could have views and natural light from the exterior coming in. We have the community rooms, again, the elevated craft and stage area. One thing that's a little bit different about this and something we kind of liked is this elevated stage really could be used from either side. It could open up into that lounge area for smaller kind of performances into the lounge and lobby, or it could address the community rooms. Or even could, if we had an amphitheater space behind, it really could be used for a stage for an exterior amphitheater as well. So again, the community rooms have nice access and visibility to green space. And then in this option, we have the kitchen that's immediately adjacent to the community rooms, which is, which is nice, could actually have a service window that opens up right into the community rooms. And then we have the classroom, 25-person classroom that's here. One thing that's also kind of nice about this concept is, not that we're trying to really design this yet, but just having some glass area to get really ni, good visibility into the, into the facility, into the community rooms from the outside, so you really are able to see a lot of activity going on from the street or from the parking lot is kind of a nice, a nice concept. Some of the back of house space is storage and mechanical back in this area, and then men's and women's rooms that would serve the classrooms and the community rooms are in this area. And then we thought we'd show on this concept, we could either, this is the second story where the elevated track could be, and the stair would come up, and this could be a future fitness area that would be right off the track, which would give this much more justification for building your track if we did have some fitness space. And the fitness area was one of the optional spaces that you, you put in the maybe pile last, at the last meeting, so that is a possibility to, to actually have that space available for the fitness, or be, could be included at this time. Or as one of the previous concepts showed, the fitness area could be a ground floor expansion as well. Any thoughts or feedback on that concept C?
Does, does this lend itself to the phasing aspect also, or, or does it, because of the way it's designed, does that make it more difficult?
You know, I think it could be. I think we would need to look at that a little bit more closely on how this lobby and lounge space are designed, but I definitely think this could be phased that way. Really, you could have this be the second, the second phase. We just need to look at that a little closer, so it doesn't look like a first phase when it's built, you know, that it is, it can stand on its own in the first phase. But I think it is definitely a possibility to, that this one could work in that way.
I think, just listening to you and looking at that, I think there are a couple of really strong ideas in there. I get very excited to see that, that crafts page area and the usability from, from multiple sides and the way that works inside the plan. I'm, I'm actually very encouraged by seeing all three concepts. I stayed out of the original card workshop, and I was, I was a little nervous about what I would see when the concept, concepts were presented and whether or not we would have, as a group, we would have paid attention to what we really need versus, you know, what might make us the most money on, on an immediate basis, or how expensive the spaces were. So I'm, as far as the concepts are concerned, I'm, I'm very pleased to see how prudent we've been in the types of spaces that we've asked them to provide in the concepts. And for myself, I would, I would lean very heavily towards taking pieces of concept C and mixing them with concept B. I think those are the two very strongest, the two strongest concepts of the three, and I think they both have some, some huge merits.
I'd have to agree too. I, I like concept B and C as well, but I think, I like B a little more, it just seems like it'd be easier to phase it.
And I think, I think that's one of the strong things about B, is that it's, it's very adaptable to the phasing. I think the other thing that I like about B is, is the ability you have to expand in so many different directions so that as our, as our needs may or may not change, we can as a community adapt to that change without creating havoc in the plan, without creating confusion from a building standpoint.
I was just going, those are the three concepts. I wanted to see if Dave had anything to add that Kwame or I missed in pointing out anything on these concepts.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't hear all of that. What was, was there a question here?
No, Dave, I was just, I was just giving you an opportunity to point out anything that maybe Kwame or, Kwame or I missed as we kind of walked through a couple of these three concepts, if there was anything else that you wanted to mention or point out.
Well, I think you touched on all of the, the key things that, that I think are important. You know, I think in option C there, it does have a little bit of restriction on how, how many different ways you can add on to it, but it, it's a much, you know, it has some form to it that the, the other schemes haven't really gotten into yet. So I think, you know, B certainly allows for a lot of expansion and, as you said, in many different directions. And depending on what comes down in the future as to what you want to do with it, certainly allows a lot of flexibility. We've done a lot of these community rooms with the raised stage, and they have just been so popular. I think the only thing that we've run into recently, you know, we're showing a ramp going up to that sort of raised platform area. In some communities, we've been asked to provide a ramp from inside the community room up to the stage. So if, a lot of times we'll project that stage out into the first community room about five or six feet so that you could close it off with a movable partition, still have an activity in that, in that crafts room, but also have like a lecture on the, on the raised portion of the, of the projecting stage. So in some cases, we've been asked to provide an accessible means to get up to the stage from inside the community room. So that's, that's a new twist that, that we've had to deal with recently and, and takes up a bunch of space. But it's truly been popular, it's, it's so versatile and, and so used by the community that it's, I think it's one of the best things we could do for a community room like this.
I really like what you've done, and I agree with, with Councilman Boehner's comments. I think that the elements were very well put together, and perhaps I'm out of turn, maybe it's a little too early for this conversation, but I look at this like I'm going to buy a new car, and the first thing I looked at, which is probably my mistake, was total project cost of $15 million, that's not including land, and I'm going to check with my banker, Mr. Fuelborn, I'm guessing we can't afford that at this point, so we're going to have to look at some other options to either make that happen, or we're going to have to cut back somewhere. Am I correct in my assessment?
That's very good general comments.
Thank you.
Just a couple of thoughts that I had. I know Mr. Stevens mentioned taking out the walking trail, the walking track, and if we did that, and honestly, even with that, I don't see at this point a need for the locker rooms. And, and I know if we do add on the fitness, the fitness area, we're going to need that, but is that something that, especially if we're looking at phasing this, that would be better to add those locker rooms in, into the later phases? Secondly, concept C looks like it would be a beautiful building, and since we don't know where we're going to put this yet, I think one of the big things to consider is if we end up with this in a place that would give us a lot of use for outdoor space, I think concept C would really lend itself to utilizing that outdoor space better than maybe A or B did. They looked a little more boxy, didn't really take advantage of a beautiful outdoor space. So if we end up somewhere, Hawk Ridge Park, for example, with beautiful outdoor space, I might lean more this direction. However, if we end up somewhere next to 71 Highway, I'm not sure I'd like the view of the traffic going by, so.
You know, I'm kind of along the lines with Mr. Holman, I mean, when you think of this like buying a car, one of the things I, I kind of have struggled with though is, and, and I'm not wanting to exclude this, but yeah, I've had conflict over it, the walk and jog track is, in the citizen survey, the single highest percentage item that people had talked about. But the dilemma here is, and I'm kind of feng shuiing this a little bit, is it's, but it is the one activity that's counter to all the other activities. Our mission statement says, "We'll create a place to gather and promote a sense of community." All the other things bring people together in activities, while the walking track is more of an individualistic activity and is counter to the mission statement. So I'm kind of struggling with both of those. If you lose the walk track, I agree, like with the lockers, because the required building support square footage would decrease as a result, and I think that's where that would pick that up. But I, I just have, like I said, I'm not saying to exclude, but I'm just saying I'm in conflict with the walk track with the rest of the concept unless you added more activities in relation to that.
Let's go, then Kelly.
And see, that's kind of why I like to go back to concept B, is it definitely lends itself more to the phasing, which if we phase the gymnasium, the elevated track, and the lockers, that cuts out roughly four and a half, five million dollars, which then puts it more into that ball product price of, I believe, what we have somewhere around the nine, nine million dollar mark with what we could do with the, the bond as well as, you know, any access that we've been able to accumulate or put in year after year.
The point that I'll make is, what I'm seeing here in the different concepts is that the storage and mechanical areas are in the, the gymnasium areas in both concepts, and, and that's something that we have to have no matter what, what phase we're at. You know, so what we're seeing over here on, on this screen here, on phasing it on the right, that, there's nothing there for, for mechanical storage or anything like that that, that we've already been told that we must have. So, you know, that's, that's a concern that I have, trying to keep that in mind, and I know that those are, are able to be overcome, but, you know, that's something that we need to keep in mind too.
I was just going to say, it's, it's very easy to just say, to take that storage and mechanical area and say, okay, it's not part of that phasing, we'll put it in the other part of the plan, it's not a big deal to do that at all.
Other comments? Councilmember Guebark?
I have trouble with the whole concept. We heard the chamber tonight say they get calls from people wanting to have meeting places. They don't say that they get calls from people wanting to have gymnasiums or crafts or anything else, so we're talking about meeting spaces. And we have, in Raymore already, we have, I think, seven or eight gymnasiums, either school or private, so we don't need any more gymnasiums there. And when we had the survey done, people told us unless it is better than Belton, we will not support it. How does what we saw here is better than what the people are already getting? I had some trouble with, with that. So I'm not, for the cost that's involved, I don't think we're getting our money's worth.
Councilmember Boehner?
I would say, first of all, we heard from one segment at the population of Raymore tonight, we did not hear from them all, and a lot of them, when they were surveyed, spoke about the gymnasium and the, the wellbeing facilities that they wanted to see. I do agree that the price tag is expensive, it is a project that most definitely should be phased, and that's all I have to say right now.
Councilmember Stevens?
I think other than the, the meeting room space, that we could, some of the classroom spaces could take, well, we needed to tear down the parkhouse, so I'm thinking maybe that could be moved into this as well, so I think it could serve that purpose as well.
Let's go.
And also, one thing to consider is that, you know, when they say that they need meeting space, they, they need, you know, when you say meetings, that can encompass a number of things, you know, it could be just small classrooms, or it can mean space to where, you know, they can have a small convention. Well, you can't do that in just, you know, a 300-person room, whereas the gymnasium in a future phase could actually serve as convention space as well, to where it would open up and to allow you to have those trade shows and things of that nature, which if you try to have that in the school, you will absolutely not be able to do that because they don't want to, number one, they won't let anybody bring stuff in on their floor because it's more of a hardwood floor, so they won't allow that, whereas if we went with a multipurpose floor, it would actually increase the usage and the type of usage of that space in the future.
Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do see the need for gymnasium space, you know, because looking at it from my past experience working in a school district, the community always wanted to use our gyms, always wanted to use our swim pools, always wanted to use everything we had because that, inside of a school, you've got a small city, that's what you got. But the problem is, is that the community has to always come second because the, the school gymnasium's primary purpose is for the, the students and the extracurricular activities that they do there. Now, also, not just the students, you know, within the, the school districts using those, they have their adult community activities also that, that they do. So there, there is always a scheduling dilemma, conflict in that for the community to use it. And it, it was always difficult for us to, you know, if, if a person in the community wanted to use the, the high school gymnasium where I worked at, you know, back in 2000, for a wedding reception, it was almost impossible because those gyms were used constantly all the time. So, you know, I do see the need for a community gym that us, that are not students, would be able to use.
Shall we move on to the visual preference exercise?
You bet. Go ahead and move on. So what we're going to do is, we have three different boards. One is exterior materials, so there's just a bunch of different images of different types of materials. There's, there's brick, there's concrete. There's brick, there's concrete, there's stone, there's wood. The second board is architectural forms. So, that's looking at different forms that the building might be. And not that this is what it would look like, but it's, gives you a flavor of different types of forms. And then the third is different types of entries. So, you have covered entries, you have more kind of courtyard entry spaces, you have some kind of modern-looking entries with an overhang, more traditional. And so, what we'd like you to do, I'm going to give everybody a couple stickers. You get two green stickers. So, green is the things that you like. So, you can put two green stickers on each board, two images that you like. And then there's red ones. So, the red ones are things you definitely don't like. And so, hopefully I have enough cut out here. If not, we'll have to give you some more. So, each person will get three red and three green.
Can I ask a question during this process?
Sure.
As I'm looking at these, you know, I've seen our Justice Center out in Harrisonville, and it has a very high entryway. And the cost to heat and cool that is extreme. Going with some of these that have the high entryways, isn't that kind of counterintuitive to being sustainable?
It could be. It depends on how it's designed. If it's an outdoor kind of cover that may be high, obviously that's not being heated. So, it can give you a little bit, give you that sense of entry and give you a little bit more grand entry without increasing costs necessarily. But yeah, in general, I think we need to be careful about that, about not creating a big space that, you know, may not, may be hard to maintain, operate, heat, and so forth. That's a good point.
I feel like I'm in grade school, but if I have my stickers, can I go to the board?
You may not. You have to wait until all the other kids have been called.
Carrie, can we go ahead and go to the board?
Yep. Yep. And as I said before, it's not necessarily, we're just trying to get a sense of things that you like. For instance, on the materials, you may not like the building, but what you're looking at is just the materials. So, even if you don't like the building, but you like the material, go ahead and put your sticker on that. Mommy, you got red? Sorry, I didn't. That was my fault. I...
Are you ready? [inaudible]
I'm ready. You're ready? Yeah. It's a little bit of that. 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 it's a little, 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 it's a couple of them that definitely have a strong preference. So I think we can draw, um, a lot from this exercise, and we really appreciate you going through this. And, um, also on the concepts, I think we got some really good feedback from you, and I think we got a pretty good idea of the things that, that you liked about the concepts. So I think we can kind of, uh, take the next step and kind of meld a couple of those concepts together and try to, um, kind of, uh, meet those priorities, uh, that you'd like. I guess one question I would have is, um, is there a budget number that we should be trying to budget to for this kind of, uh, a first phase at least, and then, um, or...
With all of the elements that, that are being discussed as yes elements in some type of form by the council, at a maximum, and I have a meeting set up with Mr. Goffey this week, we've been unable, we were unable to hook up, um, before this, but I would think your maximum is going to be $10 million.
Okay.
And that would include the million and a half set aside and the possibility of being at eight and a half million usable funds from a bond issue.
Okay.
As far as project funding.
Okay. So what we'll try to do is try to fit as much as we can, um, of the priority spaces within that budget, and then also show how it could be, um, phased to expand, you know, should you decide that you want to fund, uh, more towards the project or, or do it at a later time. So that's the way we'll move forward.
That sounds very good.
Are we to keep these or are we to return these little cards?
The, the cards are for council use.
Okay.
So that takes us to next steps, which is what you're going to be doing.
Pardon me?
I said that takes us to next steps.
Yep, next steps. Um, what we'll do is take this input that we've gotten tonight, and we will, um, revise the plan. We'll also have a three-dimensional, uh, model that we will present using some of the images, uh, or some of the, the, um, visual prefer- preferences and materials that you've, that you've requ- that you've, uh, selected here. So, uh, that's what we'll present at the next meeting, and that will be our last workshop for this step of the process. If you choose to move to the next step, that would be looking at sites and site design and, um, and also looking at operational planning and, and those, those things. So, you have any questions about our next steps or...
Questions, any? Great, yeah, go ahead, Jay.
Just a, a comment, I, I really appreciate from the start of the, the process through today, I, I really like the way that you collect information, analyze it, put it together, and then bring it back to us, especially in the visual form. It's, it's been a really productive exercise for me, even if we, we ended up not building anything, or we went crazy and built 400 million, I, I just liked the process, and I really appreciate the time that you've taken with us, and you've made it very easy to understand. Thank you.
Other comments? Thank you. Move on to the next item. Judge Lett requests youth court.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, a- as you all know, Judge Lett will be leaving us, and, oh, Dave?
Still here.
Okay, okay, you're about not to be. Thanks for, thanks for being here with us.
Thank you very much for your time.
The, uh, Judge Lett will be leaving us, and as the council may recall, Judge Lett, um, was the, the driving force behind youth court, uh, coming, uh, using our facility. We, eh, with the exception of providing some police support, uh, we don't, we don't actually do youth court as the city of Raymore. They simply use the chambers here, and Judge Lett heads that, that particular operation up. And again, with some, some of our staff's support, but very, very minimal. Um, she, since she is leaving, she felt it appropriate to, uh, ask the council if she could continue to use council chambers for youth court, and if she could change the night from the, the third Thursday, I'm sorry, the fourth Thursday, which is the attorney's docket, uh, day, to the second Thursday, which is a blank day in the chambers here. Uh, staff would actually, if you, if you are okay with her continuing the program, which has been quite valuable, um, eh, staff would support the movement of the day because there are occasionally, when we have a very large attorney's docket, there are conflicts with attorneys still being here, when the youth court people are coming in, and that's, that's not a conflict you want. So staff would be supportive both of continuing to let Judge Lett, um, use this facility and moving it to the second Thursday of each month.
Councilmember Westcoat?
Um, I, I would support this request. You know, youth court is a very valuable program. Um, I think it's been very successful. Uh, my son is, is one of the participants, um, in youth court, um, as one of the, um, when I say participants, he, he's not the one that has to go before the court. Uh, he's, he either serves as the bailiff for the prosecutor or the defense, and, um, and I've always considered it an honor, uh, that youth court has been held in, in the city of Raymore. And I think it's something that, that we should be very proud of, and so I, I am definitely supportive of her continuing to do it and the change of date.
And Jim, I'm glad you brought that up about the conflict, because I've actually had a number of attorneys who have approached me, uh, because the confidentiality of the youth court process, Pete, all the attorneys have to leave, and they've had a number of people that have gotten backed up, and it's caused very, a lot of difficulties with the attorneys trying to get in with Bill Marshall, because they just need the time, and so this would be very supportive of our attorney community as well.
And that attorney docket has been a very effective tool, too. Jay?
I support both elements of that, and I concur with Councilman Westcoat's statement.
Are there any additional administrative costs or anything? We're moving it to a new day where we didn't have anything else?
No, not at all.
Okay, I'm in support of it then.
I'm in full support of this, and, uh, thank her, Judge Lett, for everything she's done for this and, and the foresight of, of making the changes that, that are both beneficial for the attorneys and the youth court. Um, I also am very honored to, uh, be a part of that, and I, I would hate to lose that, you know? Uh, the, the work that that, that program does is astounding. Uh, I have helped with that somewhat, because my nephew is a recent participant in that too, as a attorney bailiff and all of that, so, uh, totally supportive of this. And the, it's my understanding that the, the, the support that we, that our staff gives is mostly volunteerism, isn't it?
Either, either there is a flex schedule for the officer who is here, or, uh, one of the captains I know volunteers an extreme amount of time.
That's what I was getting at, is that I do know that, uh, Captain Wilson does volunteer his time extensively. Uh, he was at the, uh, graduation ceremony that I attended two weeks ago, so, and thank all the staff for everything they do to support this on their own time and all of that. It is a, it, it's, it's acknowledged, and it's very much appreciated.
I, I hear general support from the council.
Thank you, sir. We'll proceed accordingly.
All righty. Moving on to the next items, Councilmember Westcoat's going someplace, huh?
Unless we want to change the charter.
No, no, we don't want to change the charter.
Are you sure? Because I'm happy to stay.
The review, the review, the schedule for the replacement of this guy.
Yes, Councilmember Westcoat, uh, has indicated to staff that he will be submitting his, uh, letter of resignation, uh, formally on December 15th, uh, with his last day being effective on December 30th. Staff would propose the following schedule to council and request your consent to proceed accordingly. Uh, December 16th, Tuesday, after the letter of resignation is submitted, uh, we would post the notice of the vacancy. Uh, we can get that to the papers ahead of time, so it, it's in in plenty of time to be posted in the first week and the second week, which will of course be Christmas week. Uh, the notice of vacancy is a four, according to the charter, is a 14-day notice. It would close then on Tuesday, December 30th, at 5:00 PM. December 30th, 2014, uh, would be the deadline for those submittals of candidates to fill the empty council seat, and it would also be the final day for Councilmember Westcoat. December 31st, uh, we would mail all of the applications for that particular council seat to the council members. If you chose to do it that way, that would be a difference, uh, from the way the council has indicated they like to receive normal applications during the candidate filing process, which is every afternoon at 4:45, the city clerk sends you the applications that had been received that day. To, to, in keeping with consistency, uh, we might suggest to the council that that be an item that you would change and direct staff, by consent, to send them to you as we receive them for your review. The, uh, and then, eh, with the count, with it closing on the, uh, Tuesday, the 30th, the following Monday night, January 5th, which would be a normal work session night, uh, the candidates could be interviewed, staff could have a blank resolution prepared, and the, whoever the council picked then from the candidates could then be sworn in, or yes, uh, could be, the, the council would then go to remain an open session and vote on the resolution. Again, something that i- is up to the council discretion and, and to give staff direction on is, uh, a lot of times that they, uh, the candidates won't bring family to the actual interview process, but they may like to have their family there when they're formally sworn in as a council member. So the swear, the resolution could be passed right away, immediately after the interviews and the vote by the council, and then the, the formal swearing-in could take place then the following Monday night. They would have time to bring family and friends, so, to see them sworn in, and then they would take their seat.
And then the swearing-in would be one of the first things on the council agenda on the
That's correct.
Monday night, okay.
Would there be any problem, uh, as far as, would we need to notice up a special meeting to swear them in the, the next meeting, or what's the logistics of that?
Actually, the, the special meeting would be in lieu of the work session meeting. It would be an open meeting to interview the candidates, just as in the past.
Okay.
And it would also have to be noticed up as a special open meeting, because there would be a vote of the council on the resolution that night.
Other comments or general discussion? Sound like plan?
Would the council like to receive the applications as received or on December 30th all at once?
As received.
As received.
That seems to make sense. And is the council okay with the swearing-in then being the following Monday night? Very good. Staff has its direction. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. And then we have a fifth item. I'm sorry?
When, uh, Mr. Westcoat leaves, he also is leaving the position of mayor pro temp, and we need to, uh, the council
That would be at the, uh-
And see if we can have that in, on the agenda for December 8th.
That would be on the agenda for the same meeting.
That's correct. We do intend to do that as well.
Well, actually, I'd like to, I'd like to have a conversation with you in private to propose something maybe a little bit different.
Okay, well, we can doodle it up like we were going to, you know,
Very good.
Talk to this guy here.
Very good, sir.
All right, and we have a fifth item, uh, here, council payroll date.
Um-
That we're paying the council members?
Um, eh, in, in conversations with some council members, uh, during, during the ward meetings, eh, there, there is, because we pay the council on a set employee payroll date, but not on a set day of the month, uh, the council payday in any given month can literally have almost a half a month swing of 14 days. Um, the, uh, the, i- in the interest of consistency and also because it actually kind of simplifies things from a payroll standpoint in the utility billing office and the payroll office, staff would propose that the council, if you all are okay with it, be paid every month on the second Fri- your paychecks would be dated the second Friday of the month. And that way you, you always know you're going to get them on that day, rather than wh- when is the next city staff payday for this thing to roll in? And we're just seeking council consensus for the consistent payday.
And, and this simplifies things for the payroll people?
Yes, it does, sir.
Okay. I'm seeing thumbs up, thumbs up. Councilmember Huber?
I just had a, a question. Are we being paid for the month in advance, or are we being paid for the previous month on that time?
Same as current practice, the previous month.
So the previous month. So then, uh, in, uh, I'm thinking about the election in, in April then, any new ones coming in would not receive anything, because they, they would not have been here in March then, so...
Correct. They would be paid in May for April, which is exactly what happens now.
Okay.
It's just on a different day in May for April.
But, but everything is going to come, because I, I noticed that when, uh, people get pensions and annuities and everything, it sometimes depends upon whether you get it, I think on social security, you have to live the entire month, or you don't get the, um, uh, the payment. And on some of those, uh, government annuities, you get paid the first of the month regardless. So this is coming halfway in between, so I'm trying to figure out, are we being paid before we die or after we die?
I just want to be contrary, so I'm voting no.
Okay. We, we have one council member who's decided to go against the wishes of the council as a whole.
Thank you, sir.
And although it's numbered 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the next item is 7. Uh, do we have an item 6?
Uh, no, uh, I actually removed that item and, and forgot to, uh-
Okay.
But if you'd like to know what it was.
I, I, we can do without, I'm sure. So item 7 is, yes, Kevin?
I would suggest to item 6, if we are all done here, uh-
Well, you can, uh, item 7 is other, so it would be another.
Okay, then I'll take 7. Um, the roundabout subcommittee has received notice from, uh, mayor that he wishes us to meet. I guess, would we want to meet next week? Why don't we go ahead and direct staff to notice that up? We meet next week at half hour before the, the regular meeting, so 6:30 for the roundabout subcommittee, Monday night.
Are there any other items for the good of the, the order here?
Just a reminder that, uh, the mayor's Christmas tree lighting begins tomorrow night at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, everybody.